I hereby call the April 20th meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes show that Commissioners Locks, Commissioner Schlosser, and Commissioner Keith are absent. Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Short, and Commissioners Peters and Commissioner Williams are present. The first item on the agenda is discussion and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on March 16th. Are there any corrections, amendments, questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Approval, the minutes were approved by unanimous four of zero vote. If any member of the public wishes to make a public comment, please complete a speaker card for the commission secretary, listing the subject you would like to discuss, and you will be limited to three minutes. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. The next item is disclosure of ex parte communications by the commission. Seeing none, we'll proceed to new business, which is case number 11-280-00001. Amendment of zoning ordinance, update of City of Goodyear design guidelines, public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to section 1-4-1 of article 1-4 of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance to update and revise the City of Goodyear design guidelines. The applicant is the City of Goodyear. I will open the public hearing, and we will have the staff presentation by Mr. Burningham.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, but not through the mic.
I hope it's on.
It doesn't seem to be.
Well, I'll talk loud. Is that better? Okay. It sounds like he's turning up. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Very happy to be here. We're excited to continue to refine the draft design guidelines, and we really appreciate all of the input that we've received. We appreciate the red lines that were submitted by the planning commissioners, and we incorporated those proposed changes in your draft that you received in your packet. But there is some new information that we have received shortly after your packets were prepared. As they were being delivered, we received a number of comments from the Home Builders' Association of Central Arizona, who represent many of the home builders that we work with. And we included their comments in your packet, but we did not have time to provide a response to you, to provide you with background and a recommendation on each of those comments. And we have done that, and we have provided that to you. In front of you, there were two packets. The first one was the comments that were provided by the Home Builders' Association of Central Arizona, and then the next document attached to that were the staff comments, which included the background on each comment, included any references that were applicable to the comment, and in some instances, it provided a brief response. You'll note that in many of the comments, there were no changes that were proposed. And the other thing I wanted to point out, the comment letter that was provided by the Home Builders' Association, the numbers, the comments were not numbered, so we provided numbers. We wrote those off in the margin on the left-hand side, so that it would be easier for me to review the two documents together. The second set of comments that we received was from Capital Consulting, who is a representative of the Arizona Multi-Housing Association, and those comments were submitted on April 15th. And we've also included those comments to you this evening, and we spent the day today providing a response, and we've completed that response. We have not had an opportunity to meet with representatives of the Arizona Multi-Housing Association, and they did want an opportunity to talk to us in person, in an effort for us to explain, you know, some of the provisions, some of the new provisions, and also to discuss some of their concerns. And we appreciate that, and we anticipate that we'll be able to do that within the next week. The other thing I want, that I forgot to mention, we did have an opportunity in regards to the Home Builders' Association comments. We have had an opportunity to meet with their representative, Jackson Mall, who is here this evening. We have met with him and gone over each of the comments. We've provided a preliminary response, and then we met with him and worked through each of the comments, and we think we have addressed the concerns. He did provide insight and some background that was helpful, and you'll note that several of the provisions were revised. Some of them, you know, just minor words were changed, and we tried to show that by using italics. But essentially, that's where we are at this point. Staff can, I mean, we can briefly cover some of the comments that were provided. If it pleases the commission, we wanted to make sure that you had the comments that were made, and then some background and a response from staff, so that you could kind of digest those comments. So we can proceed as you would like, Chairman.
Well, we should probably be kind enough to hear from the applicant. First, I guess, does anybody have any questions of staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jackson Mall. I'm the municipal affairs person with the Home Builders' Association of Central Arizona. I'd like to start by just expressing my gratitude to Mr. Schmitz and Mr. Burningham for taking the time to meet with me yesterday to review the comments and to explain, to provide some sort of the background that they were trying to get. And I also want to apologize to them as well. I became on board with the organization a little over a week and a half ago, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare these, so it was kind of a late submission, but I appreciate them going out of their way to make time to meet with me. With that being said, our comments basically fell into one of two different categories. The first was kind of from a technical drafting standpoint, that we wanted to make sure that what was conveyed in each of the guidelines accurately represented the intent of the city, but then also was drafted in such a way that it would lend itself to a consistent interpretation by those in the home builders industry, but then also the people in city staff that the home builders would be working with to try to get their plans approved. And I think that for the most part, all of those issues that we had in terms of drafting were adequately addressed yesterday. The second set of comments tended to fall into a category of the philosophy of an industry trying to design a product for a specific consumer versus the desires or aspirations of a city trying to play in for its community, both of existing residents and businesses, but then also for those that might be wishing to move into the city. Now, to a certain extent, there will always be a certain amount of tension between those two things. Cities are going to want to specifically itemize those things that they're looking for. Home builders are going to want a little bit of flexibility to respond to market demands. I will say that I was very pleased with our meeting yesterday in terms of being able to, as much as possible with the amount of time that we had to meet, to address a good number of those concerns as well. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read over any of the comments, but if you have any questions regarding our position on any of those things, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Any questions of the applicant? Ladies? Commissioner Peters? I do have one, and I guess maybe it should be addressed to both of you, because I, you know, I read your letter, and I think you bring up some very good points. And the two issues that I have, have you resolved the issue, I think it's paragraph 3A1C, that it says residential street layouts that incorporate alleys with accesses to rear garages are highly encouraged? Did you come to any kind of an agreement on that?
Just one sec.
Which one did you say?
Chapter two in single-family residence.
Okay. I'll make a quick response, and then he can add to it. It's listed as number four in the packet that I provided, and the comment was regarding residential street layouts that incorporate alleys with access to rear garages or, excuse me, are highly encouraged, especially when lockwoods are less than 60 feet. We did, in our response, we did note that the design guidelines do include provisions that recommend that already, and so we noted that no substantive changes are being made. We did specifically note the reference to the 60-foot wide lots, because once you get to that lot width, that's typically when you get in a category of the homes are typically having more of a difficult time getting through the design review process, because many of the homes are, you know, they tend to be garage dominant, and so we just specifically wanted to note that we would encourage it, and that it's a, you have the opportunity to do that. And so we didn't add anything new. We just kind of updated the provision that we already had on there, and we also had a bit of a discussion with the representative as to, you know, why we would advocate for that type of a project, and we heard from the concerns and, you know, discussed a few examples. I mean, we know that there are perceptions out there about safety and quality, but we also have examples that we can look to, and, you know, specifically examples in Verrato and Buckeye, and also we have examples that were approved in Mobile, in the Amaranth project, so we were able to share those with them as well.
From our perspective, we have typically not seen a lot of consumer demand for that type of design, and we certainly by no means wanted to exclude that as a possible option from a design standpoint. You know, if a developer believes that that is going to be a design that's going to be attractive to his consumers, we certainly want them to have the opportunity to be able to do that. And one of the ways that this particular issue was addressed was, we kind of went into this from a clarification standpoint of what exactly is the standard that encouraged is going to represent? And kind of the analogy that we were able to draw to this was a standard of, in case you hadn't thought of incorporating this, we would like for you to look at doing this. And I think from that perspective, it kind of alleviates some of the concerns that we have, because again, the design should ultimately be left up to the developer in terms of what they want to incorporate, but I don't see any problem with the city suggesting or even recommending that you do this, so long as there isn't a mandatory requirement that this be included.
So you have no issue with it going forward that way?
As is right now, no, I don't.
You know, I guess my other comment is, I know the fire department may have an issue with it, and I know sanitation has an issue with it if we require trashcans to be put out in the alley rather than the street. And my other concern with it is, 20 or 30 or 40 years after the point that the association raised is, who maintains it? You know, because alleys tend to be decrepit. But, you know, I guess if you're pleased and can live with it, you know, I have no problem with it.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to see a standard that is, a more elevated standard than encouraged.
And my other comment, and I'm trying to find where it is, the one on porches, where porches are also highly encouraged.
Front porches or back patios?
Front porches. Because I, you know, I agree with the comments in your letter that the Arizona lifestyle breeds backyard entertaining rather than front porch.
Yeah, the other issue that we addressed with regard to front porches was that the type of house design that typically lends itself best to a front porch is where you have an extended garage, and that kind of conflicts with the overall intent with a lot of the guidelines that have been provided, because that's something that they're trying to discourage.
Well, this is article 3B2C, 2E, or 2G, I mean. The presentation says 2E, but it's actually G. It says usable front porches are highly encouraged. Front porches should match the scale and architectural detail of the home. And, you know, my basic point with both front porches and alleys, they're kind of retro, aren't they? I mean, yes, ma'am?
I could just make a comment. I think that this is something we've also seen in Verrato and Buckeye, where their intent was to create a sense of community, and if people could be brought out of their backyards and spend more time in their front yards than the neighborhood, sense of neighborhood of caring for each other, of being part of the same small community can be enhanced. So it's not necessarily a bad thing, and again, I think so long as it's something that people are asked to consider, it's probably not a prohibitive thing to have in the design guidelines.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, just to provide some clarification, there was no substantive change to this particular provision. There are currently two provisions that outline that particular provision. So this was one that wasn't anything new that we were presenting. It was something that we had in there already. We did slightly revise the language. The last portion of the sentence, "front porches should match the scale and architectural detail of the home," again, we're encouraging it. It's not required, but we wanted to make sure that they knew exactly what we were looking for, and the expectations were presented clearly upfront. At the same time, we heard from a number of other cities, there are cities out there that require front porches, usable front porches on every home, and one of the reasons we added that second sentence is, some of the concern from the designers that we've heard is that, you know, some designs, some architectural styles don't provide for a usable front porch on a home, and so we wanted to make sure that the porch was properly designed and that the architecture was correct in the detailing of the home.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, I think this goes back to kind of the association's general perspective, that as long as we're, as long as the city isn't being overly restrictive with what they are actually requiring that be in there, but are simply providing suggestions, or as the name of the document suggests, guidelines for what are some of the types of things that the city is looking for, that to me is a better alternative, and is at least something that the association, that the members of the association can live with from the standpoint of, we know what the city's looking for, that they want some of these elements, this, 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 and this, and that kind of lends itself then to the developer agreements with the city to say, okay, well, we have items one, four, and seven, and in exchange for that, we won't provide two, six, and nine. So it kind of, it's helpful in the sense that it creates an expectation for what the city's looking for, as Mr. Burningham mentioned, that it's almost a list that you can go down and say, this is what the city is looking for. How can we incorporate this in such a way that's going to be attractive to the people that we are trying to sell to?
I understand. Thank you. And thank you for your very enlightening comments, but I still, you know, I live in Pebble Creek, and I understand Pebble Creek is not necessarily your typical community, but there are no front porches in Pebble Creek, and there's a very strong sense of community in Pebble Creek. And again, I understand it's the maybe atypical community, right, Commissioner Miller?
Of course.
But, you know, I just see no reason to require porches, and I understand, you know, a community like Verrato or that there's a place for them, but I just don't think we need to require them.
But he's not, you're not, we're not requiring them there.
Well, I understand, but if it's in-
So if the word "highly" was taken out, would you feel better?
Yes.
Okay.
But, you know, when you put things in writing, you know-
But it's been this way. This was not a change.
Yeah, I understand that, but that doesn't mean it's not right to change it today. Do either one of you have any more comments? Are there any, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this issue?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to thank the commission for inviting me up to speak and kind of address some of the comments that we provided. And if at a later date as you review these documents, if there is anything else that you would like to address with the Home Builders' Association, we're certainly open to your questions, comments, concerns. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we, oops. Sit down. We wanted to express our appreciation of Mr. Mall as well. He made time in his schedule to meet with us so that we could do it in advance of the meeting, and the meeting was very cooperative, and I think we learned something, he learned something, and I think we'll probably end up with a better product because of it.
I guess I would make the comment that in my experience with the commission, I've been very impressed with the way you all try to work with the developers and handle the issues, and my comments that I've heard from many developers is, they're pleased with, and they would rather work with you than with staffs from a number of other cities, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I will close the public hearing. Are there any commission discussion?
I'd just like to ask one more question. This is something we discussed last month, and this is on page eight, and this has to do with the predominant use of grass. And I remember we had a discussion about whether or not we really meant that you could have sod up to 30% of the lot size or 30% of the landscapable lot size, and the concern was mentioned that by the time you put a house in a driveway and a sidewalk on a lot, that if you allow 30% of the total lot to be sod, you're really probably allowing more grass than maybe what our intent was. But I noticed that we still got it the same way, so I just wanted to bring that up again because the discussion we had last time about encouraging desert-adapted low-water vegetation and trying to look at water conservation mechanisms that the city might have as goals, that perhaps 30% of the landscapable area was a better measure than 30% of the total lot size.
Sure. Chairman, members of the commission, we did verify this provision with our, what's Sandra's title? Water Resources, Water Conservation Specialist, and she provided additional information. The state provided a plan that outlined some things that the city needed to do in order to be in compliance with the assured water supply criteria, and this was one of them. It refers to 30% of the total lot, and they do not want any more than 30% of the total lot to be used in turf. And she was very happy with us providing this provision, and we've added it in there. We've also incorporated the comment from Councilmember Gelsner, because we were also told that the artificial turf does contribute to the urban heat island effect, and when you have too much areas in fake turf, it's not as good as just having the native, whether it be decomposed granite or landscaping. So we've added them both in there, and it's basically following the guidelines that were mandated by the state. And the other thing that we were advised of is we have to be careful how far we place restrictions on the private property owners, and we have been working closely with our attorney's office and with the, and on this one, with the water conservation specialist to make sure that we've got it where we need to.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation, and my heartfelt thanks to you folks as well. You've done an excellent job throughout the process, and appreciate the outside cooperation and help as well, because I think we're gonna, as you say, have a much better product in the end than any of us could have come up with by ourselves. Thanks again. You guys have done a great job.
Any other comments, questions? Brett, is there a revised recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the recommendation is that we continue this item to the next planning commission meeting, so that staff will have an opportunity to sit down and discuss the comments that were provided by the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. We've provided a response to them, and we've included that response in your packet, but it's a preliminary response. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss in detail their concerns, and they did have some comments regarding a number of provisions that we are not seeking to change, and, you know, they may have some insight, and we wanted to make sure to give them a forum to discuss that before we, before we, had you make a recommendation, and they also asked that they have an opportunity to meet with us outside of a public hearing before moving this item forward to the city council. So we would request that you continue this item.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
It's number 11280001.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion to continue carries by a vote of four to nothing.
Mr. Chairman, that'll be the May 18th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, just so anyone interested in the date would know it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is staff communications.
Commissioner Williams, whatever mics were, thank you, here. The, we have the developer advisory forum scheduled tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in the engineering, community development conference room next door in Vinita. And we have a few items on the agenda you might find of interest. We're going to get an, engineering's going to give an update on A dot construction activities along I can and the I can 3D enter bank, as well as we'll provide, Brett's going to provide a status report of the design guidelines, and also the engineering and building safety are working on a proposal for this to provide for, require lot clearance. to provide for, require lot clearance for, prior to issuance of a new construction block and see for a new home on a lot-by-lot basis. So those are three of the items. And I think there's some corrections to the Integrated Master Water Plan. So those are the items for tomorrow. I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Yes, I do. I have a little thing here with last week's or last month's minutes that say, please sign and return to Joe. But do, should, can I sign them? Should I sign them, or should?
Yes, as acting chairman.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, we see this Soto is going to serve as Secretary of Commission to replace Joe, and Bobby will also be filling on occasion too.
Good. Welcome. What was your name again, please?
Bobby Green.
Oh, Lucy. Okay. Thank you. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.